Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call our meeting to order and to call on Board Member Betty Jenkins to open us up. If you'll please stand for the pledge at the ward for a moment's silence. Thank you. Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you all. Now I'll turn it over to our Board Attorney Jill Wilson. Is your mic on Jill? Sorry. Here we are again, our annual reorganization meeting, which as you know by our enabling legislation occurs every year in the first, the first item of business, in the first meeting in December. And I'm thrilled to see us all here again. I will be sorry to see the board members who are no longer going to be serving with us go. We'll be excited to welcome our new board members and it's just a wonderful time of year every year. Our first item of business will be to swear in our new board members and to do this honor, we are so lucky to have someone who has spent her career in public service helping the citizens of Guilford County. The Honorable Laura Cabbage is currently a resident Superior Court Judge in Guilford County Schools, I mean Guilford County. We like the thing where the most important thing here, but we're not the only thing. Judge Cabbage went to A&amp;T, so she has lots of connections to our community. She has served in the district court, she's served in Superior Court, and she's been an Attorney General, so you know that's a lifetime commitment to public service. And how lucky are we to have someone with that much concern for our citizens come here today, just where our folks in. So Judge Cabbage, if you will come up and if we could ask our new board members to please come up, bring your families, your Bible if you choose to use one. And I'll turn mine off. I would like to add, in case it's not clear, Chairman Hayes, you are also being sworn in, so please join us. Pardon me? Oh Linda! Okay. All right. You can do it however you want. If you just do the "I wills" instead of the repeat after "me's," you can do them together or you can do them one at a time, whichever you prefer.
Okay. Well, it's y'all swearing in, so what do you prefer? I'm here. Y'all together, okay. And I'm gonna do affirm since I don't know who swears and who affirms.
All right.
Okay.
Do we have everybody? You, go help Deana hold her whatever she'd like to hold. Well, John gets to go stand with you and family? Oh, I'm sure. You guys scooch on in there any way that's comfortable? This is such a great cause for celebration and I want to thank you on behalf of everybody in this audience for dedicating yet another four years to public service. So please, please, make this your moment. Are we all arranged in ways we're comfortable? Judge Cabbage, the floor is yours.
All right. So if everyone want to put their hands on, left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. And when I finish the paragraph, if you do say "I do," if you don't, we need to know that now. Okay? All right. Do you solemnly affirm that you will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge your duties of your office as a member of the Guilford County Board of Education? And do you further solemnly and sincerely affirm that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability? And do you further affirm that you will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of Guilford County Board of Education according to the best of your skill and ability and according to the law? All right. Congratulations.
Board members, I'll need you all to sign two copies of your oath, please. And then if everybody else can, if you want to pose for pictures or find a spot, you're welcome to do that for a minute. It'll take a few minutes to get this done. Audience members, we have a reception in the lobby. If you want to sneak up here and take a picture, feel free to do that. If you want to start in the lobby and have a refreshment, please do that. You don't have to sit here unless you want to. All right Jill. Hello again. So as you'll recall, after we are sworn in as board members, our next order of business is to organize ourselves so that the first thing we do is elect a chair. What we'll do, chair, nominations for chair do not require a second, and no nomination requires a second. So we'll take nominations, then if there are no more nominations, we'll close nominations, we'll vote. If we have multiple nominations, we're gonna use paper ballots. And you'll remember, for those of you who were just recently trained and those of you who've been trained before, you have to sign your ballot because we do our business in the sunshine and anyone is entitled to see how each of us vote. So at this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for the position of chair.
I'd like to nominate Deana Hayes.
And I'd like to nominate Linda Wellborn.
Okay. Are there other nominations? All right. Is there a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I am going to pass out ballots. It says vote for chair, so that's where you write needless to say who you're voting for, your printed name and your signature. And by a vote of five to two, Deana Hayes Green is our chairman. Congratulations Chairman Green and welcome back. I will be ready at the willing. You now will conduct the candidacy for vice chair and I'll be passing out your ballots when appropriate.
Great. Thank you. And thank you all for your support of my leadership. I look forward to serving with you again this year, so thank you. Is there a motion for vice chair?
I move to nominate Kim Erby.
Okay. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Betty Jenkins.
Any other motions? Nominations? All right.
I'll nominate myself.
All right Jill.
Is there a motion to close the nominations? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. I am passing. Board members, we're in an interesting place. Because you have eight members currently, because you have not yet added your ninth member, we do not have a board member who has gotten a majority vote, so we will take the top two vote-getters and revote. The top two vote-getters are Betty Jenkins and Linda Wellborn. Board members, the vote count has not changed. We have one board member, Kim Erby, who did not vote. Betty Jenkins and Linda Wellborn are still the top two board-getters, but only by a major, not by a majority, so we'll vote again. I am delighted to say that our superintendent has reminded me we have an absent board member and therefore four is in fact a majority of the board present and voting, and therefore our vice chair is Betty Jenkins. Congratulations. You don't have to finish the last one. Let me explain that again slower. You have seven members present, a majority of seven is four. Betty Jenkins received four votes, Ms. Wellborn received two, and Ms. Erby did not vote.
All right. Well, thank you and congratulations, Ms. Jenkins. We are now at consideration of the District Three vacancy. On December the 7th, we received a letter from the Legal Council of the GOP recommending for our consideration, Michael Logan. Is there a motion?
To accept Michael Logan.
So is that good? So we can use our electronic voting for this? Okay.
I have placed at your places the statutes that are relevant. I have placed at your places the statutes that are relevant to this issue.
It fails by a vote of five to two, and we will bring this up again in our January meeting.
So, yes, so board members, for a legal refresher, for anyone who is interested, our enabling legislation, which is at each of your places, requires that a vacancy is filled by the vote of the majority of the remaining members of the board present and voting, which will require a vote of four of your currently constituted board, without Ms. Bellamy Small here. And so you failed to elect by a majority.
Thank you. We are now at recognitions. We will move to recognize our December Employee of the Month, Fay Clayton. Will you please come to the podium? A trusted leader, a trusted leader in custodial services will close out her Guilford County Schools career on a high note. Just a few weeks away from her expected retirement, Custodial Area Manager Fay Clayton was named the December Guilford County School Employee of the Month. As a custodial area manager for 15 years, Fay supervises custodial services at about a dozen schools, ensuring that the work is top-notch. She's also there to assist custodians with issues that may arise in their buildings, and help them improve their skills. Ms. Fay has been a positive influence for me in being a lead custodian, wrote Myrtle Terry, lead custodian at Ragsdale High, and won of several nominations. She showed me how to deal with the difficult challenges that come with this job with a smile on my face. She has been a wonderful mentor for me. I love her spirit and how she chooses to handle conflicts. Fay received a $50 gift card courtesy of the Greensboro J.C., and during the month of December, your photo will hang at the District Central Offices, and the Custodial Services Department, and at the Greensboro J.C.'s office. At this time, I'd like to ask a board member, let's see, I think it was down there at Kim, at Diane Bellamy Small's seat. But Kim, would you read the recognition? In her absence. That's it.
Okay.
Guilford County Board of Education Certificate of Recognition presented to Fay Clayton, Custodial Services for the Employee of the Month, sponsored by the Greensboro J.C., signed by Dr. Whitely, Whitney Oakley, and our Chair, Dina Hayes, Chairman. Good evening. Good evening, and thank you so much. It has been an honor working for such a great school system over the past few years. I have always, my goal was always to create a clean and safe environment for the students and staff. I worked closely with my supervisor, Mr. Haxton, Mr. Brandon Haxton, trying to make sure that we were headed in the right direction. I have truly, I would truly miss you all, and thank you all so much.
Thank you. And we'd like to shake your hand as well, Ms. Clayton. Oh, there are a lot of people here. Come on up here. Friends, family, colleagues? Okay. Next, we honor a group of employees whose work is critical to the operation of our district, and we are grateful to them for their tireless work on behalf of the district. With Chief Financial Officer Tara Trexler, please come to the podium. For the 28th straight year, the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada awarded Guilford County Schools its Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. That certificate recognizes state and local governments that successfully demonstrate transparency and full disclosure in preparing comprehensive annual financial reports. I want to say again, for the 28th straight year. The award was given for the district's, thank you, for the district's comprehensive annual financial report for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year. We are proud of our financial services staff for their attention to detail and their efforts to share that detail with the public. At this time, I'd like to ask Board Member Betty Jenkins to step down and present Tara with a Certificate of Recognition for this achievement. Thank you, Tara, and your department.
Give the Kind of Board of Education Certificate of Recognition presented to Financial Services for receiving an Award of Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officer Association, on the date of December 13, 2022, signed by Superintendent Dr. Whitney Oakley, and our Chair as far as the board, Dina Hayes-Green.
Oh, I'd like to say thank you to our superintendent and the Board of Education. In 28 years, it is my privilege to be the new name on the report. There have been others, and there, there's actually lots of others across our district that help us receive this award for the last 28 years, and it does, it is a cross-district challenge and opportunity to, you know, lead the finances and provide the reporting that reflects what we do here in Guilford County for our staff and our students. And I would like to recognize those in the Financial Services Department. We do have financial services, we have accounts payable and accounting and school accounting, we have purchasing, and payroll, and budget, and school nutrition, and if I left anybody out, let me know. I think I hit purchasing. And I would like to say an extra special thank you this year to Angie Henry, who has led us with policies, procedures, you know, rules, practices for the last several years that really did go a long way to assisting us to set us up where we can continue to receive this award. Thank you very much.
All right, well, you know the drill. You and Angie and all the financial services folks that are here, we want to shake your hands. Ms. Henry. I thought you were going to tag on in the back. Now you're going to have to come up here all by yourself. Angie hates attention. Thank you all. And we are now at our Volunteer of the Month. Umbreen Rockman has been a consistent gem for the Allen J Elementary this school year. As a bilingual parent, Ms. Umbreen brings a unique quality to the Allen J Elementary community, and has not hesitated to share her time and talents with their scholars. Ms. Umbreen volunteers for a minimum of three hours every day to help support small group instruction in one of our dual-language Urdu classes. After working with small groups, Ms. Umbreen works in the media center, and then when lunch begins, she volunteers in the cafeteria to help our lunch line distribution go smoothly. Her dedication and passion for serving our scholars are commendable. I was not surprised to hear her say one day, "I am so happy to work with students. I go home every day and study the materials to be ready for them the next day." Ms. Umbreen has a smile that warms your heart and will brighten anyone's day, says Carla Flores Valesteros, principal at Allen J, who nominated Umbreen. As the Guilford County Schools Volunteer of the Month, Umbreen was presented with a $50 Visa card, and during December, your photo will hang at the District Offices in Allen J Elementary. Who has the, all right, at this time, I would like to ask Board Member Chrissy Pratt to present the certificate.
Hello, congratulations. So the certificate says, "Guilford County Board of Education Certificate of Recognition Presented to Umbreen Ramon, Allen J Elementary, for Volunteer of the Month, December 2022, from Guilford County Schools, signed by Whitney Oakley Superintendent and Dina Hayes, Chair of Board of Education." Congratulations.
Thank you so much, everyone, and GCS, and I'm so happy to help for Allen J Elementary School to working, and thank you so much. I don't know how to say anything. I'm so nervous.
That's okay. We would like to shake your hand, and anyone that is here with you, your family, your colleagues, anyone that is here, please have them come forward. Congratulations again. We are now at our public comments, and as you approach the podium, you have three minutes to make your comments. When you have 15 seconds left, an amber light will come on. When a red light comes on, your three minutes are up, and we ask that you wrap up your comment so that other speakers will have the opportunity to make their remarks. We also would like for you to introduce yourself, giving your name and your address. If there's anyone in the audience that is supportive or agrees with what's being said, we'd like for you to demonstrate that by doing this, so that the speaker will be uninterrupted and will able to get, be able to get through their comments. Our first speaker is Dorothy Sanders, followed by Derek Mobley. Dorothy Sanders, followed by Derek Mobley. All right, Derek Mobley, followed by Lizzie Biddle. Welcome.
So I guess that means we're missing Dorothy, right? All right.
For now.
All right. Thank you, everybody. My name is Derek Mobley. I live at 6012 Crystal Spring Court, Greensboro, North Carolina, 27410, and I'm a parent of a GCS student. I'm here today representing my friends at the Greensboro Solar Power Now Coalition. I think they've made some pretty consistent showings here advocating for sustainable practices and clean energy, and what they're hoping to see from you is a commitment to transitioning GCS to 100% clean, clean energy by 2050. They're also looking at a couple of policies, I think it's 6530 and 6530-R, that they're hoping to have that added to, and then specifically enforced. You know, again, I know they've been here, I think, a couple of times, but now we have some new faces to make that impression, so this is something that is important to me as a parent. I think it's important to us as a society, you know, if we, we want to get away from carbon-based energy, and, you know, one of the things I've been thinking about, there's a lot of good arguments for it, but as you may know, recently, at the state level, we passed a bill trying to get North Carolina to carbon-neutral by 2050. And, you know, as we know, we have our own education bond, we're looking to overhaul our facilities, we wonder how far that money's going to go, and since the state is now all-in on getting us carbon-neutral by 2050, I think if we show them that they can be part of that with us by committing to clean energy by 2050, hopefully they may help us close the gap, you know, with some of those funds when it comes to design and things like that. So I hope you will prioritize this, and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Lizzie Biddle, followed by Michael Logan. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, esteemed Board Members of, Board of Education members, Guilford County School staff, and my fellow community members. My name is Lizzie Biddle, I'm a resident at 5103 Ainsworth Drive, close to Guilford College. My congratulations to the Board of Education members that won their recent campaigns. Your hard work, your diligence, your time should all be commended. Running for public office, as you all know, is not easy, and it is certainly not a cheap endeavor. You ran because you care about students and you care about our community. Thank you. It feels to me, and might feel like to you, that we are in our community at an inflection point. We are experiencing rapid growth, rising housing costs, and stagnant wages. We are determining how we will live with COVID, and how we will, we will address some of the long-term impacts of the past two years, including lingering effects on student outcomes. Inflection points, as you know, are also points of opportunity. You have a chance to address some of the most pressing and embedded issues in our school system, and really, the majority of Guilford County residents and neighbors are right alongside of you, ready to work with you. We are ready to take advantage of these opportunities. In May, we voted overwhelmingly to invest in all of our public schools by passing the school facility bond. In the coming months, alongside of you, we will lobby our state legislatures for full and equitable distributions of the Leandro dollars. We know that oppression and discrimination in the form of slavery, Jim Crow, voting rights, access to education, employment, housing, healthcare, and so on are not just relics of the past, but live with us today in the way that we are situated as people. Unfortunately, for decades, and really for centuries, Black students and other students of color have been left far behind by Guilford County Schools. Well-funded or not, has never ensured that Black students are not at the bottom of the educational outcomes and measures of academic achievement. Addressing those equities is not a zero-sum game. In fact, improving all, it will in fact improve It will, in fact, improve all student outcomes. We also have skin in the game. This will benefit all of us. This is the issue that I hope will take your attention and your time over the next and coming years and months. Understanding and teaching the truth of our history and the present realities will better equip us to address these issues. Working together as a united board for the long haul, coming together across lines of difference, knowing the problems cannot be solved by an individual school superintendent, a single policy, or single program. This work takes a deep sense of curiosity and a willingness to be uncomfortable individually and collectively. So I urge you to place equity at the center of your work and the center of your decisions. And as a District III representative, I urge you to consider a new board member who, as well, will take that to heart and work right alongside all of you and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Logan, followed by Patricia Cheek. Welcome.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Logan. If we could just take a moment, we have a special guest who has just arrived that was supposed to be here earlier. We'll be right back to you. We'll be right back. You can sit right there if you'd like. Okay, sure. Ladies and gentlemen, I have a wonderful surprise. Our Representative Ashton Clemens is here, and if you would like to come forward, please. Apparently Representative Clemens spent some time in traffic.
Yes, you can blame 40 traffic for me being late. I apologize to everyone, and I'm... Thank you for letting me jump in where I am not in the agenda. But I have the great honor of recognizing someone who I have respected very much for many years, who is retiring from Guilford County Schools, and that's Angie Henry. Angie has been an active community servant for 30 years. She received her BS in Accounting from UNCG. She has a husband, Terry, and her three children who are here. I'm gonna cry. Angie has served GCS since 1995 in many different ways, including Director of Accounting and Executive Director of Finance. I was running from the parking lot. I'm gonna catch my breath. She was recognized as one of the Tribe Business Journal's 2015 Financial Executives of the Year. And as CFO, she created several budgets that improved the lives of students, teachers, and staff, including working really hard to improve, even just recently, the pay for the staff across our district. As a principal, the first school I served in was Oak Hill, and we had a federal grant for $3 million, and as a new principal, managing that was quite overwhelming. And so to have someone like Angie, who did not belittle you, when she very well should have, but actually just wanted to love and help me as a principal, use resources to impact kids, directly improve the lives of Oak Hill students and me as a principal. But I have to tell you, since being in Raleigh, I've realized how rare Angie is and how respected across our state she is. We were having a meeting early with my time in Raleigh about how we needed to simplify school funding, which you all know, and someone in the meeting said, "You know, if you have a great CFO like Angie Henry, you can make the resources go farther for kids." And they were saying that, not knowing that I knew Angie. But what a statement, that Angie's skill and talent in finance made more resources for the children of Guilford County Schools over the years. So I have the very big honor, on behalf of Governor Roy Cooper, of honoring Angie with our state's highest honor, the Order of the Longleaf Pine. The Order of the Longleaf Pine is saved for people who have had at least 30 years of service with extreme and exemplary service to our state. And it ends with the toast of our state, which exemplifies Angie's life. Here's to the land of the Longleaf Pine, the summer land where the sun doth shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong go great. Here's to down home, the Old North State. And to be able to say someone with a background in finance helped the weak grow strong is quite a testament to Angie Henry. So congratulations and thank you, Angie, for all you've done.
So we kept this a surprise. Angie's family's been hiding out in the basement. She had no idea. Thank you, Representative Clemens. Dr. Oakley has a token of appreciation that she would like to share on behalf of the district. You thought you were gonna sit this one out, huh?
She's so mad at us right now. I can feel it burning through her soul. But if you haven't seen the new grandbaby, there's really no question about why all of this is going down. We are so grateful to Angie, and this is in recognition and appreciation of your years in service to Guilford County, and we look forward to seeing you when your six months are up in June. And I'm not kidding. Congratulations. We'll miss you.
So you have to give me a chance to thank you, thank my family. I can't believe that y'all somehow got here. You snuck 'em in. They have, I feel like, worked as much for Guilford County in the years that I've been here as I have, for all they've given up to help me be successful here. I want to thank the board, all the boards that I've served under, for your trust and faith and the honor you've given me to be able to work with such a phenomenal financial services team for the time that I've been here. We've had a great team, and we've been able, you know, to... The word indicated earlier, you know, to do great things for the students at Guilford County Schools, but we couldn't have done it without your faith and trust in us. And I learned from the best. Many of you know Sharon that we lost earlier, almost a year ago, and I'm leaving the finance department in great hands. And I'm just very excited to see how Guilford County Schools is gonna be forward. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Now we want to shake your hand and your family's hand.
Thank you very much. Now that we've resolved all these happy-money occasions, let's give them a second to get out. And Mr. Logan, my apologies for interrupting you. It is now your turn to speak, and I'm sorry.
Again, Mr. Michael Logan, followed by Patricia Cheek.
To whom it may concern, this is my letter of resignation and is contingent on the school board placement for District III and is effective with the placement on the school board. Life is funny. As the elected representative for District III from the GOP Executive Committee, I would like to call out a point of order. And most people may not know what a point of order is. It is a query to a formal debate or meeting as to whether correct procedure has been followed. I would like to read the General Statute on the Replacement for a School Board Member, and it is GS 115C-37.1. "All vacancies in membership of county boards of education, which are elected by a public or local act on a partisan basis, shall be filled by appointment to the person, board, or commission specified in the act. Except that if the act specifies the appointment should be or shall be made by a party executive committee, then the appointment shall be made instead by the remaining members of the board. With that following down, if the vacating member was elected as a nominee of a political party, then the person, board, or commission required to fill the vacancy shall consult with the county executive committee of that party. An appointment the person recommended by that party executive committee, if the party executive committee makes the recommendation within 30 days of the occurrence of the vacancy. Whenever only qualified voters of less than the entire county were eligible to vote for the member whose seat is vacant, either because the county administrative unit was less than countywide, or only residents in certain areas of the administrative unit could vote in the general election for the district seat. The appointing authority must accept the recommendation only if the county executive committee restricted voting to committee members who represent precincts all or part of where the territory of the vacating school board member." Now, I have been elected by the Executive Committee of the GOP for District III. That is my seat, and I will be looking forward to sitting in it one day. We have 15 seconds left. Let's do a moment of silence for District III, since they had no representation in the election of Chair and Vice Chair.
Thank you. Patricia Cheek, followed by Joseph Bradley Self. Welcome.
Thank you. Yes, I am Patricia Cheek, and I live at 24 Elm Ridge Lane in Greensboro, and I'm with Child Evangelism Fellowship, which is a nonprofit ministry to children. And tonight, we have quite a few guests here with us. If you're here with CEF, raise your hand. They are supporters of our Good News Clubs. And so we are an international ministry to children, and we're in almost every country. We partner with churches, and we partner with schools to have after-school Good News Clubs that meet in elementary schools once a week for one hour. And so these Good News Clubs are free, and they're open to everyone, and only require a signed permission form to attend, just like all other after-school clubs. For the past 14 years, Good News Clubs have been meeting in Guilford County Schools. The clubs have had over 1,000 children in attendance prior to COVID, capturing 10% to 20% of the student body. Good News Clubs have been very popular with parents because they're desiring their children to have the club's character training. And the children are eager to attend and excited about all the fun activities and the learning, and we have over 250 volunteers who participate. The school staff members have only great things to say about the Good News Clubs. And these clubs have been convenient for parents because they meet in elementary schools following school dismissal. However, since the revised Guilford County School Facility Use Policy states that requests for non-school community events during the after-school timeframe before 6:00 PM will not be considered, children are very unhappy and parents are very, very concerned. The new policy does state that the Guilford County School may consider requests from organizations invited by the school for instructional training prior to 6:00 PM on a school date. And so we are asking you, please, please allow principals to invite Good News Clubs to be part of their after-school program prior to 6:00 PM. Churches want to adopt the elementary schools that will allow them to have an after-school club. Adoption means that these churches are gonna provide resources and meet needs that arise within the school for the staff, for the children, and even for the families. And these once-a-week clubs will make a difference. They do make a difference in our community. So this character education training that is offered by the Good News Club is an instructional program falling in line with the North Carolina law requirements for schools to teach students various character traits. Principals concur that the Good News Clubs positively impact the children and the schools as there is less bullying, less mental health issues, therefore, less resources are needed in the form of counselors and SROs. And so we just ask you, please allow the Good News Clubs to continue before 6:00 PM in the Guilford County elementary schools, like they do all over the nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Bradley Self, followed by... I hope I'm saying this correctly. Remember? Kim Logue, I hope I'm saying that right? Welcome.
Thank you. Three minutes. My oldest daughter is 12 years old. I haven't gotten three minutes to speak uninterrupted in about 10 years, so I'm kind of excited about this. My name's Joseph Bradley Self. I'm at 4918 Setter Court, Jamestown, North Carolina. 27282. I went to General Green my first day of school, and I went to Jamestown Middle and then Ragsdale, and I love Guilford County Schools. I'm inspired. I'm thankful for each of you devoting time and your careers to the school for our children. I look for a way to give back to the community, to stand beside the teachers and come alongside the principals in Guilford County, and teach love, watch children get along with each other. In the Good News Club, we got to see children with disabilities get helped and built up by their peers, and we also taught some that maybe needed a little assistance in accepting other people that maybe didn't look like them, to teach love, to teach tolerance for each other. We... I have a team, or had a team up until March of 2020, of 10 to 15, and we did regroup that team this summer, 10 to 15 people that were mobilized and ready to help schools, to come in in May and June to be proctors. To... I have a church standing behind me that will financially support the schools that we adopt, provide needs immediately with a phone call. And it's so much easier to do this when you have a team of 10 to 15 people that are in the school every week that are mobilized and ready. All I gotta do is send an email and phone call and say, "Hey, this school needs this. Let's go. Let's do this. Let's stand alongside..." If they have a loss in the school, we pray for them. We try to meet the needs. One of the greatest things I can recall about leading a Good News Club was I mentored a group of boys from second, third, fourth, and fifth grade, and I was in Home Depot checking out, and about a 6'4" kid comes running across the store and says, "Hey, Mr. Brad, Mr. Brad," and I didn't recognize him. And I didn't recognize him because last time I saw him was fifth grade, now he's taller than me. And he was thanking me for helping him out in elementary school and being a part of his life. And I remember, there was three of them, and they were rowdy. It was the end of the school day, and I loved it because it reminded me of me. You know, they come in there, a lot of times they don't want to sit down, they've been sitting all day. So, I can relate to that, I talk to them. I figure out what's going on, ask them every week, hey, how was your week? And a lot of them want to talk about sports, and a lot of them want to talk about what's going on at home. And so, we just, the main thing is to listen to these kids. A lot of times in schools, I see that that is their, that's their source of love from these teachers. I see these teachers loving on these kids and just being their rock. And we just want to support that, teach them love, pray with them, and provide a gospel-centered set of morals that they can take home and invest in their lives. So, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And next up is Kim Logue, followed by Lisa Harris. Welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kim Logue, I reside at 103 Country Park Road, Greensboro. I come before you this evening to speak to what appears to be actions under consideration by the county and/or school board involving its facilities, use programs, and policies as it relates to use by various non-curricular clubs. Please permit me to take you back 21 years. In 2001, the US Supreme Court ruled that although government may not promote religion through its educational facilities, it may not bar student religious groups from meeting on public school property if it makes its facilities available to non-religious student groups. Furthermore, in a separate but related case, the court held that allowing student religious groups equal access to a public school's facilities would further a secular purpose but not constitute an impermissible benefit to religion and would pose little hazard of entanglement. In addition, the Equal Access Act requires schools that receive federal financial assistance to allow student religious groups to meet in school facilities during non-curricular time to the same extent as other student groups. I recognize and acknowledge that certain clubs may have a purpose that some would consider cringe-worthy and against our moral fabric. However, the greatest gift our country's forefathers enshrined in our constitution is the freedom of speech, the freedom of religion, and the freedom to peaceably assemble. It troubles me greatly that the Guilford County School Board would not only appear to consider or seek to defy a Supreme Court order, but that this board would take actions resulting in the denial of access to school premises to a student religious club while granting access to other non-curriculum-related student groups as appears to be currently happening. As late Justice O'Connor stated in a plurality opinion, there is a crucial difference between government-speech endorsing religion and private-speech endorsing religion. Guilford County's taxpayers, residents, and students are likely to understand that by permitting a club like the Good News Club to meet, a school does not endorse or support student speech that it merely permits on a nondiscriminatory basis. So, I call upon you to do the right thing and allow not only Good News Clubs to meet, but to allow other non-curricular clubs to meet. If you choose to shut down everything, you're changing no one's minor perception. You instead are perhaps ruling as a dictatorial adversarial body, which I know we all wish for no school board to do. And if you instead pick and choose which to allow, you could be in violation of our constitutional rights. If the purpose of a club is not illegal, immoral, or unethical, then you should permit its use of school facilities. By law, a religious-related entity must be afforded the same benefit as non-religious, non-curricular activities. If you shut everything down or preclude a faith-based organization to meet, then you also shut down one of the greatest tenets on which the United States was formed, and that is the tenet of freedom of religion. Our state's license plates read, "In God We Trust." I recommend that the board consider doing likewise.
Thank you. Lisa Harris, followed by Pastor Sherman Mason. Welcome.
Hi.
Hey.
My name is Lisa Harris, and I reside at 7902 Merritt Court in Greensboro, 27409. I started helping volunteer in an after-school Good News Club at a local elementary school in Guilford County in 2007. We were not allowed to begin our club until 5:00 p.m. We had only three students attend that spring, and two of them were from our church. Fortunately, I came here in 2007 and addressed the board then and other clubs as well. And Guilford County decided to change their facility use policy so that we could begin clubs immediately after the school day ended. Our club continued with students that had parental permission to attend, and we grew slowly over the next 13 years. We also saw after-school Good News Clubs begin at other schools as well with great success in Guilford County. When our club had to stop in March 2020 because of the pandemic, we were averaging 70 students in our club. We're a church-sponsored club with about 12 trained volunteers, and we meet once a week for 90 minutes. We desire to show the love of Christ to these students and teach them the importance of virtues such as honesty, forgiveness, kindness, and respect for others. Over the years, our church has developed a really good relationship with our local school, and we adopted this school to help in other ways. We provided the staff with breakfast, teacher appreciation lunch. We bought gift cards to give as incentives for students. We've provided gift cards for Teacher of the Month. Including this year, we've purchased Christmas gifts for families the school identified as needing assistance. We've helped serve as proctors for EOGs, testing. And in 2020, our church provided 2,000 personal hygiene kits during the pandemic for Guilford County schools, students that were experiencing homelessness. We want to continue this relationship with our local school. We want to continue to minister to students with our after-school Good News Club. However, it is my understanding that the district is changing the facility use policy so that after-school clubs cannot meet until 6:00 p.m. Most elementary students won't have the opportunity to come to our club or any after-school club that is that late in the weekday because these are elementary-age school students, and they go to bed early, and most won't have transportation to get back to the school. So, I'm asking you to please reconsider changes in your policy. Please allow us to meet immediately after the school day ends. Help us to continue our relationship with our local public school. Thank you.
Thank you. Remember, Pastor Sherman Mason, followed by our alternate speaker, Pastor Brian Clark. Welcome.
Good evening, and all honor to such an esteemed body. Three minutes for our Baptist pastor. Hallelujah, shall we pray? I'd like to share with you just a brief story in my allotted time. I live in High Point, 826 Central Court, High Point, North Carolina, 27260, and I am honored to be here tonight. I volunteer and serve around our community in a host of different ways. I wear a ton of different hats. But one delight that I have is seeing lives transformed that transform our community. I have volunteered for the Violent Crime Offender Task Force in High Point. I want to share with you one story about a young man who was flunking out of school and was on the brink of serving long jail time. There was nothing magic in the water in High Point. We just applied good old-fashioned gospel love to that young man. He was facing seven felony charges. By applying gospel love to this young man, six years later, he graduated college summa cum laude. I'd like to think that the power of love still transforms lives in most profound ways. I humbly request that you consider this as you consider the after-school use policy. We're applying that same principle now to younger kids. As we sat and discussed as a city, how do we end this violent trend that we're seeing? And I'm pragmatic, I believe in supporting things that work in quantifiable measures. And the efforts that we were doing were bearing fruit. Crime was being reduced, and we were recognized at one point as being one of the chief police departments in the country. So, how do we move from intervention to prevention? I believe it's by applying that same love, not at the point that something has happened, but before it happens, by teaching them honor, the respect of authority, teaching them self-esteem, teaching them that there is redemption when you've messed up, teaching them that you matter, that you are important. And I know that those values go hand-in-hand with what you labor for every day. All we ask is for an opportunity to continue to do this after school. I believe in it, I've seen its benefits. I witness it every Sunday from the pulpit, and I'm honored to serve. I would ask humbly that you continue to give us that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Pastor Brian Clark. Welcome.
Thank you guys so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Brian Clark, Pastor Grace Life Church, 2317 Stanley Road in Greensboro. I'm also here to request a change to the facilities use agreement to allow Good News Clubs to meet after school. We began working with Alderman Elementary School in the spring of this year, and we're set, we actually had a team of volunteers set to start a Good News Club in the spring. And then, there was a, as I'm sure many of you are aware, there was another club, another organization that wanted to start. And so, at the time, the county made the decision to suspend those different clubs. But in the meantime, we met a great relationship with the principal, with teachers, and we decided, we're going to support this school, we're going to adopt this school no matter what comes. We were able to support their field day, bring waters, drinks, support teachers and the principal when teachers went back to school, brought breakfast, and began to support them there. And then, now, in the last few months, we are up to sending home 33 meals every week for 33 different, well, let me say it this way, 33 different students where we're providing food for them for the entire weekend. Those that the school has targeted as underprivileged and do not have the financial resources and may not be able to meet those needs. Out of that, we've also been able to build, begin to build relationships with some of those students and families and are being able to help some folks that are going through some really challenging times, just be able to teach them the gospel and then also teach them just practical life skills to be able to do life and to do life and thrive and be successful. We would like to see the time change because we would like to begin to have Good News Clubs in, again, in schools. Because right now, what we're able to do is, if, old parable, you teach, you give a man a fish, you feed him for a day. But we want to actually be able to invest in the lives of these students where we can actually teach them how to fish, where we can teach them things like character, work ethic, love, how to get along with others, how to get along with people that you disagree with, which is something that we all need in this nation, and I really believe right now. And so, again, I just want to thank you for taking a few minutes just to hear me. And I would ask again that you guys would reconsider the policy in terms of when outside organizations are able to meet for the facilities use because I think we could have a great, we already have an impact, we could have such greater impact. So, thank you guys so much.
Thank you, and this concludes our final comments. We are now at approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We're now at the consent agenda. Dr. Oakley.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. This evening's consent agenda includes the following items: Approval of the November 22 meeting minutes, the personnel report, the 2223 budget amendments and transfers report, the contractual agreement with D8 Everett Christman for bid package 2A at Peck Expeditionary Learning School Project, the contractual agreement with Hellis Construction for the Page High School Artificial Turf Turnkey Project, the contractual agreement with Metcon Incorporated for bid package BP26000 electrical at Kaiser Middle School Project, reconsideration of the North Carolina School Board's Action Center 2223 contribution. That concludes this evening's consent agenda for your consideration.
Is there a motion?
We're pulling on G.
I'm sorry.
G, item G.
You want item G pulled?
Yeah. We have to have a discussion.
Okay. So, the consent agenda now is items A through F. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Hold on just a minute. Okay, Ms. Pratt? How do you vote? Thank you. Deborah? Betty?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Diane?
Yes, on all except for E, no.
Okay, so items, and Deana, yes. Items A through D and item F pass unanimously, eight to zero. Item E passes by a vote of seven to one. And we are now discussing item G, reconsideration of the North Carolina School Board's Action Center contribution. Ms. Erby?
Thank you, Chairwoman Hayes. The reason, one of the reasons why this item is being reconsidered is because it was not supposed to be on the agenda in our High Point meeting. So, inadvertently, we did vote on it, but I needed to bring it back to the board for discussion. The Action Center is something that we have to contribute to. And I know that we have been a part of the Action Center, but one of my biggest concerns is that there's no real accountability to the Action Center for Guilford County and our legislative agenda. So, I'm proposing to us is that we would not participate with contributing to the Action Center, but actually budget our $10,000 for our own advocacy efforts directly with our legislators or with, in Raleigh. I think for us as a large district, the North Carolina School Board Association does have an agenda that not often really aligns with our legislative agenda. So, that's what I'm putting before the board for us to reconsider it and bring it back.
Discussion? Linda? Is, Kim made a motion, is there a second? To the motion, Kim made a motion for us to...
You can second it and then discuss. You don't have to vote for something just because you second it. Second means you want to discuss.
Okay. Linda, and then Diane.
For the most part, I've worked with the North Carolina School Board Association for some time. And when they were after Fund Eight, Hard and Furious, you know, they had that generic, or that larger voice to push back on that, and we were successful numerous times. When you go look for lobbyists, there's lots of lobbyists in that building on numerous issues, addressing education not in our favor a lot of time. A lot of time, the North Carolina School Board is that one avenue we have. Number one, they keep us up to speed on what's going on. Number two, you know, they are a small group. They do not have, so the reason for the, what the Action Group actually gets an extra lobbyist. And we need to have that voice there on a consistent basis. We will not have the means to be there in a timely fashion when things are happening. They will have that resource, they can be at those meetings, and they can support initiatives of that nature. So, I support them, and that's my reasoning.
Thank you, Diane.
Well, Linda, I never would have thought that it would be a day when you and I would agree, but... You know what? Hey, Christmas is coming.
Oh, you're just agreeing with Linda? Okay. Any other discussion? Deborah?
The next thing that's going to happen is the floor is going to open up as far as hole. It's just a joke, it's just a joke. Correct me if I'm wrong, but hasn't the lobbyist group shrunk? Like markedly in the past, I want to say five years is what I looked at? Oh, they have a lot fewer people than they used to.
The lobbyist hiring was based on how many of us actually pay the fee.
Okay.
And that's how many people they are, have the ability to hire.
That makes sense.
Right. My biggest concern is that there's no real accountability for us and the things that we need for Guilford County, that we can't call up a lobbyist and say, hey, this is our agenda. Can you work on these items? Everything is, you know, statewide agendas that they're really working on.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't, she's still talking, but I don't-
What?
You didn't say a date, though?
No.
Because I think the dues has to be paid by February.
By February, yes. Yeah, I'm asking for us to bring it back. That's my motion to the board, to reconsider being a part of the North Carolina School Board's Action Center.
So that would have to be at a January meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
So Deborah, you seconded that?
I did.
Okay. So we can use our devices to vote on that. Tabling it until- Yes, because I would like to get some information. I know Dr. Kay can bring some information back to us about, about this. Were you saying something, Jill?
Would you like me to repeat that?
Yep.
Okay. So for clarification purposes, what we are voting yes or no against is tabling, approving, spending this money until the January meeting where we can have some staff bring us back some more information about the lobbyists themselves and what they're doing. Does that sound right? Very good.
And other information?
Other, whatever they deem necessary.
Right. That passes by a vote of six to two. All right, we are now at reports. Good evening and welcome. Congratulations again to Angie Henry for receiving the order of the longleaf pine. What a well-deserved honor. We've been fortunate to have you in our ranks for all these years. We want to give tremendous thank you to the Bikes for Kids Foundation, who through the help of local sponsors, gave away bikes to third graders at twenty-one, twenty-five of our Title I elementary schools during the last two weeks. Bikes for Kids rewards students for their hard work, and it helps inspire them to think big, work hard, be kind, and know excuses. I want to recognize our very own T. Diane Bellamy Small, who now has an award named in her honor on behalf of her work with the Learn to Swim program. Diane's efforts have helped thousands of Guilford County schools' second graders learn to swim in the past decade, and we are very proud of her leadership in this area. I want to give a shout out to the Grimsley High School football team, which competed for the 4A state championship on Friday night. Despite the loss, we are extremely proud of these players and their coaching staff led by head coach Darrell Brown. And thank you to the Carolina Panthers and the Dairy Alliance for generously providing a $10,000 hometown grant, which will benefit School Nutrition Services. The grant will allow the district to purchase immersion blenders to produce fruit and yogurt smoothies. The smoothies were first introduced through a pilot at Northern Middle, and their popularity led to an increase in breakfast consumption at that school. In partnership with Weaver Academy, School Nutrition Services will plan a smoothie kickoff event that will include smoothie sampling and taste test Tuesdays in March for National Nutrition Month. That's really exciting. Winter break is a great time to read a book or several. K through eight students who read at least 300 minutes during the break will receive a free ticket to two UNCG basketball games, and extra tickets will be available for $8 each. High school students will be entered into a drawing for a $25 Barnes &amp; Noble gift card. Students should speak to their media specialists for more details and a reading log. Office Depot made a generous donation of nearly $20,000 to 10 of our Title I schools. Schools can use the money to purchase school supplies at local Office Depot and Office Max locations, and we thank them very much for their support. And finally, congratulations to Sumner Elementary, which the State Board of Education recently recognized as a state school of character. Guilford County Schools has had 21 state schools of character since 2014 and 13 national schools of character. Thank you, and this concludes my remarks. Dr. Oakley?
Good evening. Congratulations and welcome again to our newly installed board members. I look forward to working together as we serve our community and improve learning outcomes for our students. Last Saturday was my 100th day in this role as superintendent, and I'm grateful to the board for this opportunity to lead the schools in my community where I grew up, where my children go to school, and where I've dedicated my career. Tonight, I want to share just a few updates on what we've accomplished together so far. Since becoming superintendent, I've met with more than 2,000 people during our Better Together community conversations. I've also been able to visit schools in each school board district. We've engaged with various stakeholder groups, including parents and students and teachers and staff and operational staff and bus drivers and our faith-based leaders, fraternity and sororities, business and nonprofit representatives, families of multilingual learners, and families of exceptional students, among others. During these meetings, we've asked them three questions. What is compelling about where we have been and what we have accomplished over the last five years as a school district? What else would they like to see prioritized? And what do we need to do and prioritize in order for our graduates to be successful? Let's start with what is compelling about where we've been and what we've accomplished over the last five years. This is what we've heard so far. We have heard that what's compelling is increased support for students following the pandemic, things we've been able to provide as a district, including the high dosage tutoring, learning hubs, summer opportunities, et cetera. It's compelling that we've been able to continue work to close gaps while we still have a long way to go. We've been able to expand school safety measures, access to mental health supports, of course, the historical bonds to address critical infrastructure needs, including building and fully renovating schools in priority order, as well as safety and technology upgrades. The wide range of educational and co-curricular programs available comes up across each group. Advocacy for competitive pay scales that attract and keep the best and brightest at all levels of the organization, and enhancements in school transportation. The next was about what we've heard stakeholders across each of those groups would like to see prioritized based on their own lived experience, whether it's as a parent, as a community member, as an employee, or as a leader. The priorities that they have shared are the need to raise awareness of on-demand workforce development, career paths, and other programs available to students early. Parents in particular said, middle school is even too late. We need kids to know what the options are earlier and earlier. The need to improve access to higher education and knowledge-based jobs, the need to increase not just this one beginning of a superintendency, but to increase community forums between senior district leaders and a staff, particularly our classified staff want to continue to be engaged. The need to strengthen communication and relationships between schools, families, and students, particularly in this post-pandemic space, to increase our intentionality around parent involvement, to provide additional safety strategies and mental health supports for students and staff, to calibrate on our code of conduct and its implementation across schools, and to offer more opportunities for the GCS community to learn about the budgeting process. Additional priorities that have come up are to build a strong professional culture where teachers and staff feel supported, respected, and appreciated, to address staff's schedules and impacts on childcare, to address student's schedules, including athletics and the impact on after-school jobs, students being able to hold a job. We know both of those are directly connected to our bus schedules, including more time for school administrators to be able to focus on instruction and strategy, to provide meaningful integration of technology into academics, offering clear ways for community partners, parents, and others to support the district and schools. People really want to know how to help and want it to be simple, to integrate impactful and relevant professional development that is built into the calendar for all levels of staff, and to increase consistent practices with clear and meaningful data. Lastly, what do we need to prioritize in order for graduates to be successful? So we asked the same stakeholder groups the same three questions, and what we heard here was strong written and verbal communication skills, critical and analytic thinking skills, early and frequent exposure to professional opportunities, civic engagement, team building and collaboration skills, a personal vision for their lives and careers, and a focus on addressing the gap in expectations when students enter a transition grade, so kindergarten, sixth grade, and ninth grade, and paying particular attention to those grade levels. Our academic programs have strong support across these groups, including the tutoring and the learning hubs. Stakeholders want to see those continue, and they also want to make sure students have access to highly qualified teachers in the classroom and highly, high-quality instruction across content areas. I shared with our new board members yesterday during orientation that despite the shortage of individuals who are graduating with an education degree and education programs that are closing across our country, we still have an experienced faculty here in GCS. Eighty-four percent of our teachers have three or more years of experience. We also know we had some of the lowest attrition rates, although we have some work to do, among the large school districts in the state. Thanks to the hard work of human resources and other departments, we started the school year with more qualified teachers compared to the other districts our skies. As other districts were reporting hundreds and hundreds of teacher vacancies in August, we had 20 out of more than 5,000 teachers on the first day of school. One theme in every single conversation was the need for more mental health supports for students and staff. We also heard about continuing to implement and explore school safety measures to keep our students safe. I heard a lot about redefining what post-secondary success looks like, particularly from the business community and parents. There's interest here in providing opportunities for students to explore various career paths earlier. I've been asked to continue to host these community conversations and strengthen our relationships and communication with students, staff, families, and the community, as well as continuing to be good stewards of the resources that this community has entrusted us through the school bond. Finally, there was a strong emphasis on providing equitable access and improving learning outcomes for all students. As we've been listening to our community, we've also tried to be responsive to what the needs are. We know that our students need us now more than they ever heard before. So, so far this year, our learning recovery efforts are expanding quickly. We've already increased the number of students tutored by 398% this school year compared to where we were last November. We've increased the number of tutoring hours by 567%, and the number of tutoring sessions by 707%. We've tutored nearly 1,500 more students this year than the total number of students we tutored during the 2122 school year. Our learning hub numbers are also growing. You can see here, we increased the number of students attending when we look at last November by 115%. Why are these numbers so important? There's a couple of success stories here. The first example, of course, is that in math, grades 3, 8, we're recovering at a faster rate than the state and other large districts. It's because that's where we focused our first tutoring efforts. It wasn't just start tutoring. It was let's start specifically where we saw students losing ground the fastest. The second example would be the preliminary analysis that students who are participating in the learning hubs have a six percentage point higher graduation rate in 2022 than those students who did not attend. Of course, the healthy and safe schools is important. We've shared details. We don't need to go into all of them, but we have been able to deploy 12 new safety strategies this year, and we will continue collaborating with our city and our county and our law enforcement agencies as we continue exploring additional measures that keep our staff and students safe. Since the launch of the on-demand mental health support, nearly 1,000 students and staff have signed up. That's really just since October for our students and since this month for our staff. Last month, we also hosted our first-ever Student Safety Summit with more than 100 students from across the district to hear their perspectives on what a healthy and safe school looks like and feels like, and they had a lot of really smart things to share that should guide our work as we move forward. So here's just a quick summary of all the things we've accomplished together over the last 100 days. A few additional items that weren't captured include the launch of various advisory councils that include parents, teachers, and principals. Of course, Guilford County was authorized by the local government commission to move forward with the bond, which will have a tremendous impact on our community. The official project ordinances have been sent to the county commissioners for approval, and I'm so proud of our team and our community for being part of this effort and for the commissioners for working so closely with us as we move the work forward. Although I'm from Guilford County and I've been here for a long time, I have felt a very warm welcome. People want this to go well. They show up, they want to be supportive of schools, and you can feel it, feel it in each room, and the support has been remarkable. I think people are ready to help. They want to know how to help, and I think our community is ready to help our district continue to move forward and is asking us to tell them how to support our schools. Last week is a great example. More than 100 participants shared in the principal-for-a-day experience, and we're grateful for that, and certainly grateful to Guilford Education Alliance for working with us to make sure that community members can see the great things that are happening in our schools and to get engaged. I'll end with this. I really do believe in Guilford County schools. I believe in the power of public education. I think it's what's going to change the world. I think in my 20 years here in public education, I just can't think of a more important time now for our schools and for our students, and our students need champions like us to show up for them, to not get distracted by things that are not our core business. We can't lose hope, but we have to move forward. I think the future of our students and community depends on it. We wouldn't be sitting here if we didn't believe that to be true. The clock is ticking, though. We don't have time to waste, given where we are. So early in 2023, I'll be bringing this emerging direction to the board and a set of priorities to guide our work moving forward so that we can all be aligned and engaged in that work, and you'll hear more details in the coming weeks, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. We're now at the National School Lunch Program?
Yes, and I'll invite Tara Trexler and Travis Fisher to come forward and get to the right place here. We'll switch over the presentations in just a sec. Tara Trexler, of course, serves as our chief financial officer, and Travis Fisher is our executive director of School Nutrition, and so they'll be helping us lead this update, which we initially shared some information with the board in September. The board asked that we bring back some data, and we, so we would be back in December, and here we are. So tonight's overview will include the Meal Charge Plan, alternative meals, free and reduced-price lunch applications, and an update on donations, which the board also requested. As we shift to the Meal Charge Plan, I think it's important to remember why we are in the place that we're in. So after feeding all of our children at no cost to our GCS families since the beginning of the pandemic, this federal waiver for free school meals for everyone expired on June 30, 2022. To allow for communication of this change and to provide adequate time to collect and process free and reduced applications for qualifying families, the Charged Meal Plan, approved by the board back in 2012, was not administered this fall, but does resume in January 2023. The plan allows students to charge the value of five breakfasts and five lunches, which currently totals $19.25 before receiving an alternate meal. Cafeteria managers will make preparations to ensure staff know their students and promptly and discreetly use this alternative meal process when necessary. I'll now turn it over to Mr. Fisher to explain a little bit more about the Meal Charge Plan.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Oakley? The Guilford County Alternative Meal of Fruit and Vegetable Choices, Milk or Water and a Roll will look similar to the Daily reimbursable meal to avoid identifying that student. Discretion will be used. It will be a priority to avoid identi- It will be a priority to avoid identifying a student who receives an alternative meal, and at no point will food be taken away from the student once they have received it. The alternative meal option is in place to combat the charges that students have already incurred and will incur in the future. In preparation, the district has been sending letters to families with low and negative balances. And our online payment portal also has an option for parent notification when balances reach a preset level. Charges are only allowed for reimbursable meals. A la carte items such as entrees, I'm sorry, additional entrees, sides, or desserts will not allow to be charged. However, students can purchase those items or meals with cash, regardless of their outstanding balance. First semester balances are still owed to the school nutrition fund for unpaid charged meals unless a free and reduced lunch application was processed and approved. And when charges cannot be eliminated by other methods, a line item in local fund budget will be used to reimburse school nutrition for the remaining balances at year-end as required by federal regulations. As you can see, as of December 7th, the district had a total charged meal balance of 111,627. This charged meal balance was incurred by 5,702 students, which is calculated to be an average per student amount of $19.58.
I could, if you, okay, I'll just interject real quick here for context for board members particularly who weren't here. But in 2012, before the board instituted the alternative meal, the charge balance was consistently about half a million dollars, around $500,000. And that's back when we did not have the CEP schools, the schools who received the universal, and it was high. Um, that equals 10 teachers out of our local fund. So it's not an easy conversation. It's not a popular conversation. But I think the board arrived at that place in 2012, and it's important to remember that context. Um, also important to know that right now in the state of North Carolina, there's $1.3 million in charged lunch balances following the end of that federal waiver.
And these balances include adjustments that have already been made to student accounts who now receive free or reduced-priced meals. And more adjustments will continue as parents receive their charged balance letters and choose to complete the free and reduced applications or pay off their balances. The following efforts this year to collect and, to collect the free and reduced applications, uh, through letters, outreach to the school and the community events, over 2,600 phone calls have been made and 138 home visits. Uh, the school nutrition department has processed free and reduced lunch applications for almost 16,000 students and received approvals for almost 83% of those. In addition to approvals through free and reduced-priced, uh, applications, students can receive free meals through a direct certification process when enrolled, uh, in other qualifying state aid programs or determined to be homeless, migrant, or runaway. In our schools qualifying as participants in the community eligibility program, CEP, the district serves an additional 30,349 students at no cost to the family. And 69.8% of GCS students currently receive free meals by qualifying through one or more of these three opportunities. This year so far, the district has received generous donations in the amount of $6,750, uh, to pay down the student balances. And a link is posted on the GCS website, and checks payable to GCS School Nutrition are always accepted. This last slide is just some of the great work that our current staff is doing. Uh, the cafeteria managers are working hard. As you can see, the food looks great. We've had a lot of good feedback. We try to focus on, obviously, healthy items with all the different fruits and vegetables, the presentation of the food, uh, and then the, the variety as well. Uh, as you can see, the bottom right-hand corner, just a typical, hopefully typical, um, beverage cooler. Um, Wing Wednesday has been a big hit with the high school students. Taste Test Tuesday, as you mentioned earlier, has also been a big hit. That's where we, we get to sample out items to the students, and they tell us, they give us their feedback. Because we want to build a menu around what they like, not necessarily what I like or what my team likes. And they're very honest about it, so. And we welcome that honesty because that's what's going to help build the program and to allow them to eat breakfast, lunch, and dinner with us, uh, as many, many days as they can, so. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we're happy to take questions.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Herbie?
Uh, my question is in regard to the 5,702 students. How many of them have not filled out the application? Was it in here? Oh, okay.
It's a, so it's constant. And so I don't know that we know at the individual student level because we're also not allowed to know who they are. So it gets a little tricky and may be able to triangulate all the data sources. I don't know if that requires identifiable information or not. She's asking of the 5,702 that carry those balances, how many have completed an application?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. But I mean, there are, of those 5,700 students, then some of them are still turning in free and reduced applications. They may have turned one in on December 6th before we, we pulled the information, so. And once that happens, we'll go back and readjust the, the charges.
Okay. Um, I did, Angie, I did have the opportunity to eat at Allen J Elementary School. And it wasn't that great, what I had. Um, I need a little more salt. I think some of the kids need a little more salt around those turnip greens that I tried, uh, yesterday. But that's my, you know, endeavor to go around and taste some of this food that we're offering. Simply because of last year, you know, kids were not happy. So I know you're doing a great job. I definitely liked the pizza, whatever that is, stuffed pizza thing they had.
Thank you.
That was, that was good, you know, just letting you know, some things are good. But I also noticed that some of the cafeterias, they have posters of items that they don't have. So it was a little misleading to see something that was posted. And when I went in and said, okay, where, I want to try that, where is that item? And oh, we don't have that anymore. So I think our cafeterias need to take down, you know, misinformation.
I agree. Thank you. And I welcome any of you to come eat with us at any time. Yes, sodium, uh, has been a, a nice hit to us thanks to the USDA and their, um, restrictions and guidelines, so.
Thank you. Deborah, then, Diane?
And we do. I have one in elementary, one in middle, and I've been and had lunch with both of them so far this year. And, uh, Wing Wednesday, by the way, is a hit all the way down to the elementary level because I watched those second, first graders, I'm sorry, make an absolute mess. So thank you to you guys for the fantastic lunches, and thank you to our janitorial staff because, oh, my word. Um, but the food was absolutely wonderful. Definitely, um, head and shoulders above what we were doing when we had all the shortages. Um, and I also, during the principal-for-a-day, uh, stopped in at Minden Hall Middle's cafeteria, got to speak with the staff, and they're telling me that they've got great equipment. They've got what they need to make good lunches, sound stuff for the kids. Um, and as I asked, as I went around to the different departments, I said, so what can I do? What can I do to help you out? Is there anything you need? And she said nothing. She said they're set. So wonderful job. Thank you very much. Um.
Great. Thank you.
And we, I do, as a habit, use the K-12 payment portal. So, um, anyone who, and you're absolutely right. When you do have a balance, it lets you know. It lets you know faster than the kids do. Um, I love that, love those emails. Because that usually means that ice cream is being consumed on a daily basis. Um, but they do love having that access. And I wanted to back up also what Dina said earlier about, um, the smoothie trial. Because we talk about all the time how we need to have bottoms in seats to educate our kids. And we put the smoothie machine in at Northern Guilford Middle, and my oldest daughter identified it for the first time in orientation, and it was an immediate draw. They, you know, that was one of the things. They all behave. Everybody's good in the cafeteria because nobody wants to lose the smoothie machine. It's a thing. So you don't, you know, when you talk about getting kids in schools, we sit here and we talk about numbers and what, you know, how many are we attending and how many can we tutor? And while those are all valid points, my daughters are very good at bringing me back to what actually draws the children in. So I'm very, very glad to hear about that grant for the smoothies because, you know, knee-jerk instinct might be to roll our eyes and say, really, smoothie machines? But yeah, really, smoothie machines. The middle schoolers absolutely love it. It's healthy, and it's one more thing. They say, ooh, you know what? I'm going to go today and so I can get a smoothie. And it, they really do think that way. They're middle schoolers. So, um, I feel like we're head and shoulders above where we were last year. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Diane, then Kim.
Do the alternative meals cost us?
They, uh, yes, they do.
Okay, so we're gonna give the children an alternative meal, but we still have to pay something for it. So I'm, I'm not feeling the logic here of not just going ahead and giving the child the meal.
Well, the food costs us money, obviously. Um, but it's not, we're, um, the items selected may come through commodity dollars, uh, or commodity items, the fruits and vegetables. Um, and then we're, the, the most, uh, the, the most expensive portion of the meal is, is the part that's been left out. So while it does cost money, it does not cost near as, as what a true reimbursable meal would cost us.
We, we have no way, well, I, I just have a problem with, if we're going to pay for it, we're going to pay for it. you have no way of knowing which of the 5,700 students do qualify for free and reduced lunch? Is that what you're saying?
Right. It's, it's protected student information.
Is that all, Diane?
No.
Okay.
There's actually, there's actually a federal law related to that program that prohibits access to that information for any purpose, other than administering the program.
Okay, but, okay. So how do we help the, the children know that they can qualify for this? Can, can the child be approached whether we know whether he's, uh, he or she would qualify?
Yes, and I, I apologize for not being clear with, clear with that, uh, uh, earlier. The, the 5,000 students, we, um, those are, that's part of the portion of the, the students that we're sending home the leg, the negative balance letters to. And in that letter, uh, we can include the free and reduced meal application, the, the online link, uh, to be able to fill out that application. However, to go in and to look at, we could look at each, at the 5,000 different students' names to see, have they filled out an application? Uh, unfortunately, we cannot force them to fill out an application, but we can mail them one. We can, um, send them the link.
Okay, well, and thank you for putting the, um, link to the donation page that I suggested that we, uh, put on there. And then, um, this is a, a compliment. I, I, I think I, I might have said something to, uh, Ms. Henry about it, but, um, I got feedback about, um, the high school in High Point where you guys, I think, uh, you were new on the job, and I insisted that you go eat that food, you know, so that you could decide whether or not, um, it was, if the kids were saying what they were saying, which was that it wasn't good. Um, and what I have heard back is that there is market improvement, that the salads are high quality and that in fact there is a salad line where the kids are waiting to, uh, get the salad. So the quality has improved and the kids are eating, which is what we want, and they're eating healthy. So I just want to thank you and your staff for, sometimes you got to get out of your comfort zone and out of your offices and actually go and be where our staff and our students are to see it from their point of view as opposed to, you know, just reading a report. So I appreciate that, that you, you're, you're doing that. And I think, you know, our superintendent is, you know, leading in that example is that, you know, she's being visible out there and not just, um, walking around with her entourage, trying to be important, you know, but really trying to see what, I mean, you're important. I didn't mean it that way. Okay, but you, you get what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am.
If we want to, we want to do better, we've got to actually be on the ground, uh, seeing how we can improve for, for the quality based on what we have to spend and getting the best for our, our, our money to provide a good quality service to these kids. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim, and then Betty.
Oh, yeah, I, I have a question in regard to actually the vending machines in our schools that serve our adults. Some of the schools have vending machines where it costs a little bit more for the adults to access the items. Do we have any, do you, does your department have any control over that? Of the vending machines that adults have access to? Because I just noticed some schools, it costs a little bit more for me to get a soda, and then the other schools, it's like.
That depends on who the school chooses to contract, I mean, to partner with. So it, that doesn't sit in school nutrition.
Well, I'm, I'm, I think that that's something that we need to look at because some of the schools are Title I schools where the vending machines, the cost is higher. And I just feel like the staff should not be charged more for the same doggone soda across the district. You know, that's inequitable for staff, but I think that's something that we should look at and allowing schools to be able to do that.
Thank you. Betty, and then Alan.
Thank you very much for all you've done as far as the meal plan's concerned. Um, I will say the wings and the pizza is a great hit, and I appreciate that. But I still have a little concern about the, um, alternative meal. And I do understand that we are paying something for the food. And I was hoping that you were bringing back alternative, like a peanut butter and jelly or grilled cheese, something to that effect. Um, yet and still, I still see the vegetable and the fruit. And of course, you add the milk, which is good. But is this set in stone or are you still at a point where you still can make changes?
This is what we, what we're going to do for the remainder of the school year. It prevent, it's, so we are going to, it comes from the local fund. So we have to think about what we will lose. We're already at $100,000 and what we will give up at the. And we can continue to work with community partners to help us address this issue. Um, if we offer peanut butter and jelly, then everybody knows that the student with the peanut butter and jelly. So the intent is also to make the tray look as close as possible to the students who are not on the alternate meal. And kids know who gets the grilled cheese. I mean, it's like the, you know, it's like the ticket. And so, I mean, I, and there's, so there's the combination of the fiscal responsibility. I don't, you know, I don't think we want to be in August cutting teachers because of our $700,000 balance either. And so for the, for this year, this will be the alternative meal choice.
Okay, thank you. But I feel that if you had the peanut butter and jelly, that some other students may want to purchase that also because a lot of kids are used to P and B, and they really love P and B, and they will probably buy P and B. But thank you very much.
They might, and I forgot to say this. The other part of that is if you make that an option and you have to make it an option for all students, which adds a choice, which adds more cost. And so if the students who are on the alternate meal have access to the grilled cheese, not to mention the dairy and the nut allergies, it's complicated, um, for sure.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alan?
Thank you. Um, clarification. There was mention of the charge balance in 2012. I think it was around half a million. Uh, was that at the same time of year or was that a full year's charge balance?
Yeah. I think I thought that was at the end of the...
That was a full year's charge balance.
So we would estimate around 200,000 would be comparable this year with the current arrangement?
If we continue to allow students to charge with, uh, unlimited meals. And that's what we were doing before we implemented the plan.
And then, uh, just another question is the 6750, um, 6750, was that, were those donations a result of any specific ask or appeal or just unprompted generosity from people who were, who were aware of the need? Um, and is there a possibility we could do some sort of campaign with the community?
So that, that was unprompted, uh, donations? No, they may have looked on the website and seen the link for donations, uh, or heard it in some other, some other story, but I, I mean, we have, me or my, myself or my team hasn't reached out to anybody and said, and asked for donations.
It's just a curiosity and perhaps an opportunity. Thank you.
And we did post on social media as well a few times.
Sure. It was actually a little bit reactionary. We had people come to us and say, hey, we see this county restricting meals, that county restricting meals, you know, yeah, the, 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 the lower grade meal over here for the kids who obviously are running behind on their payments. So the initial ask was responsive on our part, not, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Proactive. So, um, yeah, I need to figure out, kid, can we, I know it's on the website, is it in the banner? It will be tomorrow. Okay, there we go. So, yeah, that's maybe something we could work on, make it a little more proactive as, as opposed to, you know, for people who wanna do it. That came out wrong.
Mr. Fisher, do you know? Sorry. Do you know the difference in the cost to add the PB and J or the toasted cheese sandwich or is that something we would need to bring back to the board for the daily meal? Is that what your question was?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, the, the PB and J, the, the Uncrustables, um, they are on the menu on, on some days already. Um, the grilled cheese itself, I would have to look at the, you know, two slices of bread.
I think that, yeah, the question was just the cost difference and if we don't have that, that's, it was just a question that was raised up here. Thank you.
All right. No more questions? Thank you very much for this information and, um, I know that we all look forward to figuring out how we can, um, you know, help support children and their families. This is, um, a complicated issue and, um, a sensitive one. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we are now at, I believe, our policy report. I will turn to our policy committee chair, Betty Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the meeting held on November the 9th, the policy committee voted to send two policies or recommendations out for a 30-day public comment period, and that is from December 13th through January 12th. The policies are policy number 4400, student attendance, policy number 8305, federal grant administration. The purpose of these policies revision is to bring the policy into alignment with the state law and federal regulation. As a reminder, these policy recommendations will come back to the board for discussion at our February meeting after the public had, had a chance to give their input. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Uh, we are now at closed session and Jill, I don't know who you gave the, ah, Deborah's the new closed session motion reader.
Deborah Napper is in the prize seat and she will be reading my handwriting, so we wish her very good luck.
All right.
And my husband's a lefty and all I hope to do is make Anita proud. If you're listening, Anita, if you're not, I don't blame you. I move to go into closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to discuss personnel matters protected by state law.
Second. All those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? All right, I don't think we'll be in closed session long and we will come back with an action, correct? Okay. Okay. We are now back in open session. I'd like to turn to Board Member, uh, T. Diane Bellamy Small.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we amend the, uh, uh, addendum to the, um, personnel report, uh, for the, um, administrative form of principal.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Dr. Oakley.
It's my pleasure to congratulate Mary Sluter as the new principal at Brooks Global Studies.
Wonderful. Congratulations. We are now at Board Member comments and I will start with you, Ms. Erby. Oh, yeah, sure, I'll start with you, Ms. Jenkins.
First of all, happy holidays and I hope everybody enjoys spending time with their family and loved ones. Please be safe. and our superintendent, and we are going to move Guilford County Schools forward. And I know that you, once they're sitting here now, were going to assist us in doing that. I think that's all I have for tonight. Thank you very much, and see you in 2023.
Thank you. Deborah?
First up, let me say congratulations to my Grimsley Worleys, all the way to the top, undefeated season. It was a very difficult game for me because I was sitting in my office technically on the clock with sleeping children in the house, trying not to make any noise watching that game. So, you know, I'm old enough that that was enough that I think I strained something somewhere, just trying to sit still and not make any noise. That was an incredible season. Y'all did awesome. Very proud. Next year, we got this. Am I right? Student lunches. So, we serve right around 70,000 students in Guilford County Schools. And I'm gonna, I'll be the first to take a page from Allen and put it out there that it would only take $20 from 6,000 people. 6,000 people sounds like a lot. When I ran for this office, y'all remember, because I complained about it constantly. I had to petition to be able to run. So, just out of District Five, I got 2,300 signatures of people supporting a run for me for office, just out of five. If we could get that out of every district in this county, we could cover it for nearly the rest of the year. It was hard to do. It was a lot of legwork, but I didn't have this platform to use. And so, I will go ahead and tell you that I will be the first one to go home this evening and put at least $20 in, check the bank account and have a word with the husband and figure out what the final dollar amount will be, but it'll be at least 20 bucks. So, I'll put my money where my mouth is, put my extra towards feeding the children in our schools. Because like I mentioned earlier, especially with my middle schooler and the upper grades, what's in the cafeteria is a big deal. And by the way, what you were talking about, Kim, I got a text reminder. It's pizza crunchers. The elementary kids are bought off a little bit easier with the food. But feeding the kids while they're at school is not only incentive for them to be there, but instrumental to them to learn. If you can eat, if you're growling stomach and you're not feeling well, you're not gonna take anything home with you but a grappling empty stomach. So, season of giving, if everybody can chip in 20 bucks, we can feed our kids. That said, happy holidays. There are something, there are more than 100 holidays celebrated during the December season, and whatever good you feel in this universe, I wish you well with it. As we do the dreaded five-day countdown to the kids being in the house with us for two and a half weeks, God bless you, teachers, and thank you.
Chrissy?
Thank you. And I wanted to say thank you to District Two voters, obviously, for electing me to serve your community. And a huge, huge thank you to my family for tolerating me over the past year of campaigning and all of the hard work that that requires and the sacrifice from family members. I am very excited to be serving on this board, in particular, to be able to represent the High Point community on the board and be able to bring a voice to those schools as well as to the southern part of the county. My virtual door is always open. Please feel free to reach out to me. District Two schools, I will be hitting you up after the Christmas break, and I'm looking forward to coming out and visiting schools and getting to see all of our fabulous staff in action. And I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday season, a Merry Christmas, a good vacation, and a nice break, and comes back refreshed in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane?
To the folks who were here earlier as speakers from the floor, I hope that all of the good things that you said that you were doing for our children, whether you're in our school buildings or not, that you will continue to do the supportive things as Christians. You know, we don't just need you in the school building. We need you in this community to do whatever to help our children. So, I encourage those groups to not be deterred from helping our kids just because they may or may not be able to be in the building with a program. We still need you to continue to do that. To the family that lost the three little children, there's nothing that can be said. We just hope and pray that the School Day children that we have, that we are able to give them the support that they need. And I know it's gonna be hard with school getting out on Friday, but we need to somehow or another figure out how to keep that family or any families lost a child this year. Because one thing that's hard for me is when the holidays come, is looking at who's not with you this year. And they always say the first year is the hardest year. I don't know that that's so, but, you know, I lost my grandmother 37 years ago, and it's still hard. So, I hope we'll keep our hearts and minds on the fact that it's not about the ham, the turkey, the lamb, or whatever it is that you're gonna have for Christmas Day. But it's about what else can we do to move this society forward and to stop doing things that hurt people and to try to stop some of the violence and the meanness that we see, you know, even if it's just by not saying something when somebody's not being nice to you. I want to wish everybody a happy holiday. And specifically for Kwanzaa, there is an organization here called the Kwanzaa Collective, and they lost one of their founding members back in September to cancer. And they're gonna be having a special celebration for her on the fifth day of Kwanzaa, which is Nia, at Bethel AME Zion Church. And, you know, I'm particularly proud of this group because in the 1980s, a friend of mine and I started Kwanzaa celebrations here in Greensboro. And to see 35 years later that this particular tradition is still going on. So, I know that for the young women who are in the Kwanzaa Collective, this year is gonna be extremely hard because this woman was a part of the five that continued it. So, if you have a chance, just Google Kwanzaa Collective, and they are having celebrations on several days at Bethel AME, which is right down the street here. So, if you get a chance to, you know, come in and be involved in that, and it's not a black thing. It's for all of us to learn more about each other and how we celebrate each other. And then my last thank you is to the staff for allowing me for the last, I think it's five years, to do my Little Drummer Boy Christmas sleds to you guys. Not gonna be able to do them anymore. I've got arthritis in the trigger finger. So, I hope you enjoy the ones that you've gotten. I know High Point things, I've forgotten about them, but it's not that. I'll be over there before the week is out. But I hope y'all know, I appreciate all of the hard work. We've had a tough now coming into three years. But I think we are seeing better days. So, I hope that in 2023, we'll be able to put learning loss behind us. We'll be able to feed the children. That we'll be able to get our buses fixed, and all of those things that we have thought were not possible, that going forward, anything is possible. We just gotta believe. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynda?
I want to say that I'm feeling some positive energy going, that we're going in the right direction. I feel that the communication with the community, with the staff, with everyone, and that wanting we're better together, all right? And that means talking and working together and honestly listening to what's going on and making people feel a part of the solution. So, I was very impressed with our food nutrition. I think they're doing positive things. I'm looking forward to our new leadership. I know you've got a big, you've got an awesome to aspire to, but I know you're up to it. And I love Angie. I'm so happy that she got the award. I think she greatly deserved it. And I'm happy that her family is here for the holidays so that she can enjoy all of them. So, I'm looking forward to great things happening in Guilford County Schools in 2023. And I feel blessed to be a part of that. And I want to say, I hope everyone enjoys their many blessings for having family, a warm roof, and all the wonderful things that we get to enjoy every day and say a prayer for those much less fortunate than we are. So, have a wonderful Christmas, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you. Ellen?
Well, thank you. It has been a joy to be a part of this. My first meeting. A person does not arrive to such a place on their own, so I'm very grateful for all of those that fill this room now and did before. Earlier during the swearing-in, I saw friends who've been supporters throughout the campaign season. I saw some representatives, Kenya and Amy, from the Guilford County Association of Educators. It was great to see them. Also want to give a shout-out to a new emerging group in our community called Dope. That's Dads Organizing for Public Education. Several of them were here and were great conversation partners and supporters for me. But most of all, grateful for the support of my family, and it was a thrill to have them join me for that moment of swearing-in. My four GCS students, y'all said bring your family, so we did. There's still some cupcake crumbs out there, I believe, from at least one of them. And my dear beloved spouse, Jenny Shirouse, who is integral to anything I do in my life. We started our campaign with a kickoff event in our neighborhood back in the fall, and that's a pretty typical thing for us to do, to have a party here nearby in Fisher Park. And this one was a little different, though, because I stood up and I made a speech, and that was a little odd for my kids to see. And my wife, Jenny, said to me, "Did you notice how Jack, our 12-year-old seventh grader, was listening?" So, Jack was standing up here with the broken arm from a touch football game over the weekend. And when we asked him, "How do you think this will go for our family? What do you think about this?" He sort of gave the response we expected from our usually cool and collected son. It was like, "Yeah, it'd be fun." You know, "Well, I mean, do you understand why Dad's doing it? Would wanna do it?" "Yeah, yeah, yeah, I get it. I get it. It'll be fun." So, that was about all we heard from him. But at this event, we passed out little stickers, and we gave them out downtown. We did the things that we were learning to do. And that Monday, I noticed that as my son came downstairs, he had his water bottle, which is very essential at Swan Middle School, covered in all kinds of stickers, but down at the bottom, there was a sticker that said, "Vote Shirouse." And I know a person doesn't get to a place like this in their life without lots of support. I'm grateful for all of those who've been a part of that, and I'm grateful that my son endorsed me. And we'll hold that and this opportunity with a lot of reverence and a lot of pride. But as emotional as that was, equally emotional for me was seeing Angie Henry's family in my very short time as part of this. I have heard so many times about the importance of Angie's work, and to see her recognized for that and her family surrounding her was, to me, a representation of the fact that nothing is beginning here tonight, but I am joining something that is already in motion with so many of you who do such excellent work and give of yourselves in so many meaningful ways. I want to say that's especially true of board colleagues here, and I'm grateful for you. Chair Deana Hayes-Green, our wonderful superintendent, Dr. Oakley. And finally, a thank you to outgoing board members, and particularly to my friend Winston McGregor. I'm grateful for her support and friendship and the way she will remain a confidant for me. And I would just say, Winston, I have your sugar-free candy because I do not need it.
So, we have a pastor on the board now. Kim?
Oh, wow. That was great. Welcome to our new school board members. It's gonna be great to work with new people, and I can, anything I can do to assist you, I'm available. Anything I can share, ask me any question, anything you want to know, just ask me, because I'll tell you. I was fortunate to be a part of the Council of Urban Board of Education Conference last week and was able to present the strategies that we deployed in coming out of COVID. And around the country, people, I have to say, it was well-received, Dr. Oakley and staff. The people were really impressed with the work that we're doing in Guilford County. I presented along with Milwaukee Public School, a partner in Milwaukee as well. And she shared that her schools were just now reopening this year. And I was like, wow. That was an eye-opener to hear that. So, I just want you to know that the strategies were well-received. I have a list of people that I have to email a copy of that presentation to. And the work on the council definitely is a part of the National School Board Association. And what they have done in regard to membership is made a way that counties can become a member. You do not have to be a member through your state school board association anymore. They're opening up the membership to the National School Board Association. So, I hope that Guilford County will continue to be a member because I am serving on the Cube Steering Committee, and it just opens up so many opportunities, I think, for us to be aligned on a national level as well and to be able to collaborate with other school board members. So, I hope that, you know, board members will consider doing Cube this year. I gave you guys some information about NSBA Equity Symposium, in which I did present on a panel last year, and the Advocacy Institute that's coming up. This week, I also was able to visit Allen J. Elementary because I didn't know too much about our dual-language program, and that is a phenomenal program for that community. The principal there is just outstanding. I mean, she is just wonderful, just to go around the school. But I did notice that that is a very old school building, and I hope that they're next on the list. I don't know where they are on the list, but the staff and the children there definitely deserve better for the work that they are doing in High Point at Allen J. Elementary. It's a very diverse community. And just talking to her about the recruitment strategies, and the children have teachers that look like them. I can see why that school is just an excellent school because of that dynamic, and I'm sure that we can learn something from Allen J. Elementary and the strategies that they're deploying and the dual-language program. Because we are endeavoring with the career and technology endeavor, and one thing we have to think about is language. It's not gonna be enough for our children to have those skills that they need, the 21st century skills. We need to be dual-language, all of our children. That will give them the standout ability. When people are hiring and someone has a second language, I believe they automatically go to the top of that hiring list. So, the children at, you know, Allen J. with that Urdu and the Spanish, I hope that we can create a program where it's gonna continue because when those fifth graders leave, it needs to continue for that community. So, I don't know what that's gonna look like, but I definitely want to throw that out there, that we need a continuation, and I hope that Guilford County can really become a district of language. That will be the determining factor, I do believe, for us to become more bilingual because many of our immigrant families already speak three languages when they come here. They are already ahead of us of the American child, is what I'm saying. Those of us that only speak one language, they're already ahead of us. So, I think that is where we have to look at in leveling the opportunity gap for our students in Guilford County. It's not gonna be enough for them to have the career and technology education. They're gonna need language. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I'd like to offer my condolences to the family, just the devastating loss of three children. Also, the condolences to the family of Darren Sellers. Darren was a member of our community. He was also one of the founding members, co-founding members of the Greensboro Business League that has been advocating for inclusion and diversity and access to economic opportunities with entities, municipalities, and other sectors. I want to say that our public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to come and to share their comments and their concerns. It's not an opportunity or a time for the board to debate and dialogue with people that come and speak. And so, if someone comes and they have a portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to come and to share their comments and their concerns. It's not an opportunity or a time for the board to debate and dialogue with people that come and speak. And so, if someone comes and they have a problem, we have staff that meets with them shortly after a meeting to help resolve that. And if, you know, someone, you know, comes and shares information, it's not always an opportunity to provide some context to that. So, the lovely people that came tonight spoke about the Good News Club and the work that they're doing, that, that we just don't open our schools for one group. We have to open them for everyone. And decisions are made based on rules and policies and laws. And, and there are ways that the club can participate during the time that they were speaking about, but that has to be driven by a staff or a student. And so, we can't always clarify everything, but I did want to say that, you know, we are paying attention to the school and the traffic on the school and everyone wants access to children. I mean, people call me all the time that I have this great program and they, it's just like, well, when do you think our kids can participate in that? What class should we take them out of, you know, for your program? And it's just not that simple. They're an audience that a lot of people want their time and it's just not that simple. So, I didn't want that to go unaddressed. We're not able to address so much of the things that are said, but I did want to clarify that. Thank you so much. I'm gonna wrap up my comments. I know many of you are going on 14, 16 hours at work today and you'd like to get home because you have to come to work again tomorrow. So, thank you. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right.